Councillors, today is the 11th day of March. So I have to believe we're already mid-month, pretty close. And we will call this meeting to order. We will acknowledge that the town of Cardston is located on traditional Black Food Confederacy territory. We have someone in the gallery. David Johnson is in the gallery, welcome. I cannot see you because the lectern is right on the front of your nose. So we have an agenda, thank you. We have an agenda that needs to be adopted, Councillor Burton.
So I'll move the agenda for today as presented, March 11th.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Councillor Granger. I said hi, but you did not hear me. So we have minutes of February 25th for your consideration. I read them, I found them comfortable.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2025.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right. I think we might have maybe a short meeting today.
You said that before.
Okay, Councillor. Councillor Coates, I'm doing my best.
I try to be positive here, we're gonna have a short meeting.
Okay, all right. We have bylaw 1677D, council committees by law amendment. Jeff, you may want to talk to the couple of amendments that were made there and the appendix, maybe?
Yeah, so this is just cleaning up some things from some of the business council has done over the last bit. So removing the joint donation policy committee with county and truth and reconciliation committee. Administratively, we assumed been replaced by the MOU committee that meets. And so that seems to be what's working best, and so we thought we could get rid of that. There was two other paragraphs in there that were, one just had some grammatical errors in it, so we fixed that. And the other one was something that's been discussed, and I can grab that really quick, council. Sorry, this one scrolls for a bit. It was just about how we advertise positions. It talked about how we had to put it on Channel 32, and it had really specific things. So now it's just that we will advertise generally, just we kept it very broad. So that was a good chance to fix that. So the other part, so this is a request for two different motions. One is first reading on 1677D, which is the amendment. And we're in no rush to push through them, so one reading's fine. And then we also have updated committees assignment sheet in there. Because some things have changed recently, and so that would adopt all of those since we lasted this at the last organizational meeting. While we were talking about it, we thought we'd clean it all up. So those are the two resolutions that we're requesting.
Kind of a part of that, is it possible that we're advertising for the town positions, et cetera, to have them more frequently on social media? I had a guy, I was talking to him on the weekend of the wall game. There was a position openly he never even knew about. He said, I would have applied for it if I knew it was there. I said, well, we put it on the town website, we put it on Facebook. But I don't know if we put it in more frequently in things like Facebook, if that would be better, I don't know. I just thought, I told him I'd bring that up, I'm just going. Because he didn't know about it until it was too late, so.
Okay, all right. So we need two motions, council. One, for the first reading for the amendments made to that bylaw 1677, which is now 1677D.
I don't want to make an amend, I don't want to make the motion, I want to ask a question.
Okay, well, do you want?
So under 23, you say, it says that no member of a committee established by bylaw in the town of Cardston shall speak ill of the town of Cardston or town council, nor conduct themselves. I just, I don't know. Is that destroying the freedom of speech?
I don't think you have a loss of freedom of speech as long as you are within a parameter of what's called respect. I think the word respect is what is important word there, not so much what you speak. But is that respectful, is that done in a respectful manner, rather than adversarial?
That this squashes respect or no respect. It squashes any opinion that you might want to have. It's saying, it's saying that, it's almost saying like, almost saying how you should think. And I don't know that that's right. I struggle with, is this democracy?
I see where you're coming from. What's your opinion around the table, Jeff?
Just some context there, partly, well, this used to say that no one shall conduct themselves in an unseemly manner. We weren't really sure how you define that within a bylaw, what was unseemly. In fact, it used to say even before that, this is just for almost humorous context. Most of our bylaws used to say you cannot conduct yourself in an un-Christian-like manner, is what many of them said.
That might be the best one.
Yeah, and then it seemed to evolve to unseemly. But what I was going to say was, this wording is also relying on the volunteer code of conduct that this council put in a couple of years ago when we amended that. Because we were having some issues, especially on our social media, about what some of the volunteers were saying in their capacity. And so there was some things put into the volunteer code of conduct. This would echo that to some degree. That may not appease your concern, but I'm just giving some context.
But does that, but does that really matter? I don't know, I, I, okay, because we're coming up on an election. And I recall three and a half years ago, when there was, when we were campaigning and whatnot, there was a lot of people saying, don't vote for so-and-so because of, type of thing, you know? And I, I, you know, and so, you know, did they have a right to say that? Personally, I think, I think they have a right to an opinion.
Yeah, but here we're talking about on committees, it's not broadly, it's defined, it's confined to the committee that we belong to, right? So doesn't it?
Does this spill over to just even, to, I mean, like they were talking about councillor to councillor? This is, I don't know.
You know, there was, Councillor Brown, you went to that conference and I talked about civility. I think it's in that notion of civility, can we word it better? Councillor Burton, any ideas?
I take your point, you know, does, the question, does it? I think with the mayor's interpretation, if it's civility, if it's respect, then I don't have a problem with it. For example, you know, I look around this room, I voted differently than some of you on some pretty important, to me, topics. But, you know, I don't think ill or speak ill of the person. So I think we can have a difference of opinion and express that. Even to say, so go far as to say, I think they're very wrong in their approach to something. I think you could do that. But you're not name-calling, you're not going after the person, you're challenging their idea or their approach, not the person themselves.
But it doesn't say that.
But I'm saying if we interpret, because it uses the word, does it not? I don't have my glasses right here, but does it use the word respectfully, is that the qualifier?
Well, from what I saw, go ahead, councillor.
Well, I mean, councillor Jensen, she just read it, but essentially it says, no member of a committee established by the bylaw, so this is committee members, in the town of Cardston shall speak ill of the town of Cardston or town council, nor conduct themselves in an unseemly manner in committee meetings. So that means calm down in the committee meetings, be respectful, or in public by the use of obscene or improper language or other conduct injurious to the purpose of a committee or the will of council.
So the questionable word there is ill, is that the best word? Because I don't think anybody would disagree with the rest of it.
Agreed.
Right.
So is the word ill the best word we could use there?
What would you suggest, councillor? Maybe we should say disrespectful?
That might be a better word, disrespectfully. Because I think that leaves you open to disagree.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly right.
That's what I'm saying, we want that.
Okay, yeah, I think disrespectfully.
If that's councillor Jensen's concern, we don't want to muzzle anybody.
No, no, I mean, that's not the point.
Because, because, okay, my issue is, is that we all have a right to an opinion.
I would hope so.
And we should be able to have the right to express that opinion.
And we always have, I hope you have felt comfortable enough to do so.
So I would like to somehow say that you can express your opinion as long as you are respectful.
Yeah, councillor, can we?
I was just gonna say, I think when I read this, that I don't believe it's outside of the committees that there might be a problem, there might be some people that are on a committee. I think committees are great, and there should be disagreements, and that's why you're together, you're trying to come up with the best solution for things. And I think that there might be people, I don't know, that are on a committee or a part of something associated with the town. Yes, they're not paid, they're volunteers. But I don't want those people, I don't believe those people, if they're associated with a committee of the town, that they should be bashing the town on social media afterwards. And I think that this is what it's, they can bash the town all they want, as I don't want them on our committees if they're doing it. They're free to have their freedom of speech, I don't care about that, everyone's allowed to do that. But if you're on a committee, that's, you, I'm trying to say this without being obvious what I'm talking about, but if you're on a committee and a volunteer in the town and you're disagreeing with maybe the council member on the committee or whatever, but then it spills out into, afterwards you go home, you're laying, sitting on your couch and you're on rant and rave, and your town is horrible at this, horrible at this, why, like, I don't want that person in that committee. And I think that's almost what this is getting at, is like, anyone can be freedom of speech and bash the town all they want. I just don't want that person having any association with the town, like, committee-wise. You should be helping the town. And I think that maybe there's instances where maybe someone could be employed by the town or on a committee, and, but they're just bashing very hard, and I don't like that. I'm not trying to muzzle them, but I don't, in a way, I don't want that person, like, they're bashing and people know that they're a part of a committee. And I just think that's wrong. And I think that this is saying, this basically that, like, if you want to be a part of the town in a volunteer role or anything, like, it's almost like the code of conduct, like, you just, no bashing, I guess, I'm trying to, I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to get at.
Councillor Kenley, you are on something exactly right.
I love committees that can like, argue with each other and have, come to a, it's just the afterwards, I think.
Something that is correct, that notion of code of, code of, Councillor Burton, councillor Brown.
So, you know, if you're on those committees, or you're an employee, or one of us, or whatever, there's already a mechanism to get your voice out. So if I'm an employee, I can go to my supervisor, I could go to the administrator. There's already a mechanism for that, and it's not on rant and rave. If I'm a member of a committee, there's a voice there, right? I'm entitled to vote, I'm entitled to speak. I can, I can have whoever the person is on council bring my objection to council, and it should get heard, right? Because like you were talking before, Mayor, that goes both directions, right? You can bring things from the committee here, and you can bring things from here to the committee. So I think that voice gets heard, our voice is heard right here. So I don't know that you ever need to go on rant and rave to have a civil discussion about something that's relevant to your committee. So I agree with you, I think you did articulate it well.
Yeah, councillor Brown.
So I completely, I hear what you're saying, councillor Jensen. I'm just wondering if it would, if it would be appropriate if we received first reading of this, but then requested administration to tweak the wording so you were more comfortable with it? Because there are some wording, there's a little bit of wording in here that could be changed to make it say a little bit more of, now we've had this discussion, or, you know, just because, I will say, at the meeting, I was at in Edmonton last week with Alberta municipalities, that was something that was drummed in to all of us, time and time again, is, yes, as councillors, it is our job to listen. We want people to, there's nothing wrong with disagreeing, but it's when you take it over the disagreement, when bad things start to happen. And, you know, it talks about that in here, improper language and other contact, you know, councillors getting injured and stalked and all these horrible things. I mean, they're legitimately happening in other municipalities, and they talked about it. Because somebody said, why are we even talking about this? And then they brought up, you know, well, we're talking about it because it is a huge problem. So I am in support of this, but I hear you, and I don't think there's anything wrong with tweaking the wording of it.
Yeah, I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of tweaking the wording of it.
I just don't want citizens to be afraid to come onto a committee because, oh my goodness, we could get in so much trouble if we said something wrong. You know, I don't want them to be afraid of us.
I hear you. Jeff, that is a question I had for you in the past, and maybe refresh my memory. When we have members of the public that comes and serve as volunteer on committees, do they have a code of conduct given to them in the same way as we have one? And if not, should they not have something similar to kind of harmonize council and committees and participation as such?
So no is the short answer. We do, we do have a volunteer code of conduct in some committees. MPC is pretty good, I think, about administering it. FCSS, I believe, is pretty good about administering it. But I know, like, say, GOL or Parks and Rec, councillor Kenley, I don't think it necessarily is being done. But again, your code of conduct is legislated.
I know, I know.
And so it is, it is a little bit different, because you must have one and must review it. But yes, our administration on committees could, could be more thorough on that, for sure.
I'm just wondering if it's not something that we could have administration look at? Because councillor Jensen is right, you can go wrong very rapidly as a member of a committee. And it, by no fault of their own, but by the discussion that is around the table, sometimes they go a little south. And so I think if we can help all the committees to kind of create such a thing, I think it would be a better fit. If we have it, why not have the volunteers have it?
Councillor Granger has it.
Councillor Granger?
The Starke Society, the Ag Society, and I believe the Solid Waste Commission all have a code of conduct.
Right, so it's not that many that don't have it?
Yeah.
So.
So I think if it's a separate legal entity, like the Ag Society, like the Solid Waste Commission, they probably have their own.
Right.
And it's where, it's not a separate one, it's like the golf committee or whatever, where it's really a town committee. Not that we're sending a town member to that committee, it's our committee, that's probably where we could use it. And I, I think there's some strength in, in that case, it's, we draft it, we don't leave it to them to come up with one, because then you're gonna have a mixed match of, you know, this and that.
No, I think something harmonious, something that all those committees could use. And thank you for bringing that up, because that's something that I thought of many times, and it, as Jeff about, do we have such a thing? So now we can create one, that'd be good.
So what do you want to do then?
So we're going to go for first reading, and we will direct administration to tweak the language. So who is doing that first reading? Councillor Kenley?
I'll make a motion to give bylaw 1677D committees by law amendment first reading.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, so maybe you want to move? Councillor Jensen, do you want to make a motion to ask administration to tweak the language?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to direct administration to, I don't know the proper wording, tweak? To, yeah. Tweak this bylaw.
I like it better.
Tweak bylaw 1677, tweak the wording.
Article 23, yeah, okay. Thank you very much, all in favor? Thank you.
I was just gonna, before you said, I think it's common that, at least, in my line of work, I know that we are, and I'm sure it's in our, whenever we sign up to work there, but I know that you're supposed to keep everything to your work, and you're not supposed to, ultimately, you're not supposed to speak ill of your employer or those repercussions. I've seen it happen personally, like, when COVID was happening, there was a lot of anger, there was a lot of, and you're just asked not to speak out, and I saw repercussions for people. And I think that that's common in, in workplace, and probably in committees, councils around, like, just keep it to the committee, and it just shouldn't spill over, and that's all.
Yeah, well, makes kind of sense, right? Okay, bylaw 1649Q, electricity distribution by law amendment, oh, Jeff.
This one just won't die this year.
This one, this one needs another tweaking, a distribution rate.
So I bring this with apologies, I think like I did last time. So this one in our Schedule B2, we had, councillor, you had created and approved the investment program. And so when Kevin redid B2, his original template didn't have the investment program, so we'd pass B2. And then we made an amendment with the original template, and it came out inadvertently. So this one just puts both things that have been previously approved together again. And so we are seeking three readings, including allowance for third reading.
Okay, councillor Coates?
Yeah, I move that we, first reading by law 1649Q, electricity distribution by law amendment.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, councillor Brown?
I move that bylaw 1649Q, electricity distribution by law amendment be given second reading.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you, now we need to allow for third.
I move that we allow for third reading of bylaw 1649Q.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you, councillor Granger?
Sure, I will move that we give bylaw 1649Q, electricity distribution by law amendment, final and third reading.
Thank you, all in favor? Jeff, we don't want to see it back.
Jeff, I was gonna say, does some, after we reach Z, do we go to AA or BB, or how's that work?
We're Q already.
We're Q.
Okay, all right, so now we have a follow-up from the delegation we had from Mr. Johnson. So Mr. Johnson was asking essentially for possibility of demolition by the town, public works, and financing over a long period of time for such. The letters that Mr. Johnson had received was really to require an easy fix, but to Mr. Johnson from his presentation, he didn't feel that it was an easy fix, that a more comprehensive work needed to be done. So we need to have you talk about this and decide.
I'd like to know how much is, if they're gonna tear this down, I'd like to know what the cost is gonna be, so Mr. Johnson will know. Do we have an idea?
So as I had discussed with Mr. Johnson before the last meeting, Brandon was away, and he only got back at the end of last week. So we haven't had that information for you yet, that's why there's nothing to that, to that end in your package here.
Yeah, but essentially, that's Mr. Johnson that wants his property demolished, maybe it's up to him to kind of figure what the cost would be.
There, can I speak a little bit too? And I've mentioned this to you before, administratively, I'm not necessarily interested in doing this work for people for two reasons. One is, our rates are the road builders' rates, so they will be exactly, if not more, than private contractors for the work, right? So by policy, we have to charge those rates, you approve it as a policy. So we don't, you know, we don't do it at labor only or something, right? We haven't done that. So I don't see us being competitive from a market point of view. And second of all, I'm not interested in sending my people in there and running into asbestos, running into utilities, taking on all this risk and liability, when we have people in the community that do that very well, by the way, and have equipment, have machinery, and they, they can dispose of things. And we take on a lot of risk if we get into that game. So we'll definitely, you know, we can put some costs together, but it will be based on road builders' rates, and it likely wouldn't be at any kind of financial savings to do it for the town.
Councillor Coates?
By me, Mr. Johnson, have you checked with anybody, any private contractors to tear that house down?
No, don't get in there.
I didn't think we were taking it down again.
No.
I just, I thought I'd just like.
Do you want me to go sit down?
I guess so. I reset my question, I guess.
Yeah. Well, it would be more appropriate to do it within.
Gotcha.
Councillor Jen?
Councillor Burton?
So I have a couple of thoughts. One is, just to back up generally, as recently as an hour and a half ago, I had someone approach me and say, what are we doing to make sure that some of the properties in town that are derelict or abandoned or should be bulldozed or whatever, to make sure that we're dealing with those? So I went through the multiple things that we're doing, one of which is what brings us here today. And she said, you know, I'm really glad to hear that. So, and then I go back about three weeks, I had someone else call me and have this exact same conversation, and they thought it was a very good policy. They're not the ones paying the added tax or that have to do work, but, but from a general perspective of making our town look better. And, because our, our properties do affect our neighbors, whether it be on Main Street or privately or whatever, they do. That's, so that's my first comment, is I really do support it, and I think the town generally supports it as well. My second comment is, and I asked Mr. Johnson this a little bit at our last meeting, but, so I recently bought a property for investment, and it had a terrible house on it, and I had to pay thousands of dollars to have it torn down and hauled away. The haul away is almost the bigger part of it than tearing it down. But that was part of my calculation when I bought it. I didn't, wasn't surprised one day that there's a derelict house on the property, I knew that when I bought it, and that was part of my calculation in whether I should buy it or not. That's my second comment. And then thirdly, I wonder how we would differentiate one person who gets the letter to the next person who gets the letter. So in Dave's, you know, it's a coat of paint, or it's they're tearing it down, the next person will have something else that they have to do. And the whole point of the letter is there's something to do, right? If, if there wasn't something to do, they wouldn't have got the letter. And so everybody could have a case to say, well, I need help with that, or I'd like to delay the other. And I just have trouble differentiating one to the other. If we were to help, and, and I don't think there's anything wrong with asking for help, that's probably a smart thing to do. But I would have trouble differentiating, well, if we help, we help Dave, how do we not help the next guy? Or if we help him, how do we not help the next guy? I don't, I don't know where that end would come, and it seems like either we'd be in the business, or we're not in the business.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much for your observation remark. Councillor Granger, councillor Jensen, councillor Brown?
So we spent a lot of time talking about this, I'm trying, trying to remember how many weeks or months we, we were on this. But I was quite happy to vote in favor of, of the bylaw and all of its requirements, every step of the way. I think this is something that the town needs to do. We didn't really get any negative feedback, and as councillor Burton points out, and I've had a couple of people say, well, it's about time that we started to clean up the town. So I was happy to vote for it, and I'm happy today. The responsibility of these costs sit with the owner of the property, not with the town of Cardston. And if we're going to have bylaws, we need to enforce them. And, I mean, this building has been like this for a number of years. I guess I don't know exactly how many years it's been vacant, but it fits the category of a vagrant building right to the T of this bylaw. So I'm not interested in the town spending a thin dime on this. This is clearly the responsibility of a homeowner, and it's in violation of the bylaw, and that's the way it is.
Thank you for your input, Counselor, Counselor Jensen.
I think Counselor Brown was first.
No, you will first.
Initially, I'm in favor of this, of the bylaw. But when we approved it, I kind of, and for whatever reason, I thought that it was mostly for structures and backyards or whatever that were old and ninety years old and were falling down and were not safe to go into. And now I just wonder how, how do, how are we, Counselor Burton kind of hit on it a little bit, you know, how do we, how are we deciding who gets a letter and who doesn't get a letter, and what is the, what is the criteria? So, so you have someone, let's say we have a ninety-year-old woman that lives in a house, she's been there all her life, and the paint is chipping on her house and everything, and she gets a letter. She doesn't have the finances because she's living on her old age pension and whatnot, she doesn't have the money, and she certainly doesn't have the physical ability to, to take care of it. So then what do we do? You know, what are, what are, what are we, what are our thinking? Are we going to go around town and say, your eaves are, need to be scraped and repainted? You know, how far are we taking this? You know, like I, you know, like, what are we, what are we doing here?
Counselor, I understand your point, but this was discussed at length in the rationale. It's quite well explained in that bylaw, but maybe not enough yet. I don't know.
Counselor Brown? This question is for Joshua, if I can. So it's my understanding we aren't asking that this building be torn down at the cost of the owner, correct? We're, because when I read this, it's my understanding the only thing that has been brought up is significant fading, chipping, or peeling of painted area structures. So it's my understanding, after going through this, again, we're not asking that the owner take it out at his own cost and get a huge amount of debt. We're just asking for a little paint on a building. Is that what we're asking for? Just to be clear.
Yeah, and this is just a suggestion. The way that properties are determined to be derelict under this bylaw is if they're in significant violation of the unsightly property bylaw. So one of the factors in that bylaw is significant chipping, fading of paint. So the suggestion is just, just rectify that, and it's not on the list anymore. But an owner can decide to do something more if they want, or do something different. And maybe that would remedy the issue. That's why it's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor, it's time to make a decision. Unless anybody else want to speak, I think you all had a chance. So what is the common consent, if there is?
We've made the bylaws, as Counselor Granger stated, it's there in paper, and it's quite clear what is to be designated as a derelict building. So if I stay with the government, stay with the bylaw.
Okay. What about you, Counselor Kenley?
Yeah, I mean, we have the bylaw for a reason, and I think Mr. Johnson had his concern that, like he said, paint won't do anything. Paint will just chip off again. I'm not a builder, I'm not, I don't know, I'm just going off, and maybe he knows more than we do about paint, I don't know. But it's just, I guess if it starts chipping off again in a year, then we'll have to revisit this again and figure something else out, but if it's in violation, I mean, I know he's not the only one in town that's gotten this letter, and it's unfortunate, I guess, and I hate personally putting that on people. It's finances and it's tough, and I do hate that, but we made the bylaw to try to help the town beautify, and unfortunately, it's a house that's not near maybe where traffic comes through, but we're trying to make all our residents of our town feel comfortable where they're living. Not saying people are uncomfortable living around Mr. Johnson and the house, but I just gotta stick with the bylaw, because that's why we made it, and that's just kind of where we're at.
Thank you. So we heard about Counselor Granger to stick with the bylaw, Counselor Burton, it seems to me that you had the same.
I totally get why Mr. Johnson's here, and I, it certainly could seem like a waste of five hundred dollars worth of paint. I get all of that, and so I, I appreciate him coming in to talk to us, but again, I don't, I don't think for the reasons that Jeff states, that the town wants to get into demolishing, and the demolishing came from Mr. Johnson, and he was saying, no, that's really the big solution. So, I, yeah, I just can't see how we make exceptions for one, if not for everybody, and then we're back to, well, why do we have the bylaw, so.
Yeah. At this point, there's already four counselors that are supporting keeping the bylaw in place with the terms as indicated in that letter. So I don't think we need to go any further. So do you need?
Unless there's a motion to exempt this property from the bylaw, then you.
No. So, exactly. Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry it doesn't go the way you wanted, but at least you heard the conversation. Thank you for your presence.
Could we, just a thought, could we, could we maybe, you know, and I, and I realize that it probably will still happen, but you know, if maybe Josh could continue to work with Mr. Johnson on this, you know, because Mr. Johnson says that the paint's not going to work, but maybe he could sit down with Joshua and brainstorm a little bit with him as to what would be acceptable to the town, so that, so that Mr. Johnson doesn't say, okay, well, I'm going to go do this to it, and then does it, and then we come along and say, oh, that's not gonna work.
Well, that is between.
Can he still, you know, continue to work with Josh?
Can I suggest that it is our peace officers that should work with Mr. Johnson regarding that? And to try to see maybe the two together? But essentially, it's not really our worry, it's really the owner's worry. Correct? Counselor Brown?
That is in the bylaw, though. It isn't in the bylaw that says, one time, bam, you're out, we're not dealing with you anymore. The bylaw stipulates that we will work with them in regards to, we're not just gonna hire people to come in and fix the problem. We literally are willing to work with the homeowner, is my understanding, according to the bylaw. That we, we want to work with them. So, yeah, that's, we put that in the bylaw.
Essentially, we want them to come to a proper resolve.
Agreed. Win-win.
To take away that property from the derelict property list. That's the aim.
Okay.
I was just gonna add, maybe it's not even painting, maybe it's just taking the chipped paint off, it might even look better, right? Like, that's just a suggestion, I'm not giving that suggestion, but.
Yeah, we're not trying to waste anybody's money.
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I'll try to make one more comment. I live right beside him. And to be honest, and I might be blind, but I have never noticed
Well.
the chipping until I came here to council. I'm going, really? You know, so it doesn't bother me. But anyway, that's beside the point.
Well, maybe you one pair of eyes, but there are other around in the neighborhood that have different pair of eyes.
What bothers me most about that house is who built it to begin with and what went on in there.
All right. Can we?
Put that in the minutes.
Okay. All right, under six-two, Sergeant Bob Wright.
You may not have anything here, council. Remember, Sergeant Wright was saying that they want to put their annual performance plan together, and part of that was, he identified the three pillars to which they were going to continue to do their goals, which was oh, traffic safety. Oh, for heaven's sakes, we're just talking about it, Mayor.
Working with the public, like being engaged publicly.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Community engagement.
Yep.
And property crime.
Yeah.
Crime reduction.
Crime reduction. So this, if you would like me to give him any feedback on any innuendo within those three categories, or something completely different as a priority, I'd be happy to take that to him.
Personally, if I may talk about it, I think if we carry on with those goals another, at least another year, I think they could carry on working at what they have really done a good job doing, more involvement with the community, the crime reduction, and which includes a patrol with Lior, I think, I don't want to see that gone. And the safety on the road, I think is an important thing. And I think there again, they're working with Lior together. So I think we have a good match here.
Agreed.
And we don't want more than three goals, because you give them too much and they can't do anything with any of it. So are we comfortable letting Sergeant Wright know that the goals will remain the same?
And I think, just to add on to it, that we think they're doing a good job. I know we tell them that, but I mean, really, I think they are. Like, the presence on Main Street and
It's very important.
Things like that, and their, their approach is very professional.
Yeah.
But every time I've seen them, which is too frequently, helping someone,
Right.
it's very professional, it's kind, it's, I think it's going really well, as it goes.
And I really think they're building trust in the community by their presence. And I see them patrolling even over where I live a lot more often than I ever seen them. So I find that interesting.
Rough neighborhood there, Mayor.
Well, it, you know something?
Yeah, those rough guys up on the hill.
We look a little bit far away from Main Street, but it's attracting people. Not only for gazing over the valley. Okay. All right, under seven, committee and other reporters, CPO report. Anything that you want to talk about regarding that report?
Are we have questions after this? I have a question.
Okay, so nothing under seven, under eight, go ahead.
So relating to that conversation, those two conversations I recently had, both of those people are extremely involved in our community, and neither one knew most of the things that we're doing to help, and are very pleased. And so I made a list, I don't know, I got up to like eight or nine points of things that we had done in the last two years that both of them really agreed that they had made a difference, but they almost thought it was like coincidental rather than
Oh, on purpose, yeah.
And so they were relieved that there is some improvement, but also that we're on it. Like, the one woman, she had about three suggestions, we'd already done all three of them. And so, but they don't know. So is there a way that we can better communicate? You know, if we just put out a topic? Here's, here are the things that we're doing to, you know, we've got the tax, we've got SEPTED design, we've contributed to two businesses on Main Street. You know, the list goes on, you know what they are, but they don't.
Well, you know, it's time to write a letter to the citizens, and maybe by that way, have it posted wherever we can, and maybe you and I could work together on that one, if you want.
That's a pretty good list.
Would you, would you like to do that with me?
I could email you the points at least.
Okay, well, email me then. So Counselor Granger, Counselor Brown?
So Counselor Kenley and I have talked about this in council chambers, at least twice that I can remember, that we're not getting our message out, that the, that the public out there just doesn't seem to be aware of some of the things we're doing and some of the good things that we're doing. And in other municipalities that I've worked in, they actually have a communications officer that puts out media releases, press releases, to let people know what, what their council is doing, and, and you know, given what Counselor Burton is encountering, and I'm encountering it too, people just don't know. And I would like us to make more of an effort, administration or whatever, to try and get the message out. Your, your periodic letters, Mayor Cronin, are great, but I think we need to do more than that, because people just seem to be in the dark.
Okay. You know, I appreciate that comment, and yes, I really believe we can do better.
So I hundred percent agree with Counselor Granger, don't be surprised. It's, it's actually in regards to, as long as I've been on council, I've said, we need to be putting things out there, because my generation and younger, we're not reading the letters. We're on social media, we're looking for bullet points, we're looking for things on websites, which mortifies you as a teacher, I know. But, but I think it's, I think it's the social media aspect, right? It's like, when I was up in Edmonton, I was sitting at a table with Claire's home, and something that they're doing is, and I'm not saying we have to do this, this is just throwing this out there, but once a month, it's come have coffee with the mayor. And they have a time set aside, and it's not just the mayor, it's council. And people come in and they find out things that are going on. Oh, I had no idea that that's that, or whatever, and they just feel like they're being hurt. Again, I'm not saying that, but I think for my generation and younger would be to have, you know, like, Shem does a fantastic job posting on social media and things. So maybe we have a, this month, or in the last two years, were you aware of? And then the other thing was, when they were talking to Minister of Education, well, actually, no, it was Minister Rick McIver a couple days ago in Edmonton. Anyway, he said, people, the counselors and mayors that were all there were complaining about the education tax. And all of us, or woe is me, because we're getting the brunt of the hate, not them. And he was crystal clear, he said, in all of your, you know, when you send that bill out, we don't have a problem with people knowing, it's us, it's not you. You didn't jack it, their taxes are being raised. So I, I think those kinds of things, we definitely could do a better job at posting. And I don't think it has to be a big, huge letter. I think it's honestly, this is what's new in council, did you know? Or, or maybe it's just, did you know what council's done? And every, I don't know how often, but I think we could definitely be doing better at that.
Well, counselors, if you look at the policy that we have regarding communication, if you remember, it's written inside there that every month a counselor would, would write something. It has never happened. I was left with the job.
You're killing it, by the way.
So.
I would, I was just gonna say, I would love to do something, like, I'd not write it, but I'll read it. I honestly, like, I like talking to people.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just with you.
No, it's.
So don't, don't worry about it. I think, Jeff, I don't know how much more Shem can take on. That is something you can decide at that point. But obviously, it appears that communication is maybe not going through as well as we wanted.
I just want to mention, just so that we're clear, and Counselor Granger, I think you'll remember this, you discussed this just a few months ago, and decided you did not want to put out communications. In fact, you were opposed to putting something together about all the accomplishments of the term. It came up and was proposed, and the answer was, no, we don't want to do that. So that's fine. Counselor Granger, am I forgetting that?
I don't either.
But you proposed it, as I recall.
Sorry, I'm drawing a blank on that one.
Oh, I'm gonna have to look back on that. He brought up about doing kind of a term in review, and kind of at the end of the term, and there was kind of.
My mind about that, I'm still in favor of something like that.
But there was not, there was not support around the table for it, so we just left it alone. But I'm totally fine with it. It's not difficult to do.
Okay, so
I would love to get myself a back.
Could we do it by topic, maybe? Would it, topic like improving the town's looks? That's what we've done?
I think.
Yes.
I just, I personally think even, again, like Counselor Granger said, your letters are great, I would, I would propose that we send out like one letter a month even. What did we talk about in council in three meetings? Like, what have we accomplished in these three meetings? Like, let, I don't know, maybe that's too often, maybe that's too much, I don't know. It doesn't always have to come from you either.
That's, that's what other municipalities that I've been involved in have done, once a month, put out a media release, slightly bigger communities than this one, but to get that message out, and I'm a firm believer that that's something, like, for example, Jeff, you know, Like, for example, Jeff, you know, um, not if, but when we get, you know, the FCM grant, we need to be shouting from the highest rooftops about that because potentially, we can get a sewage treatment plan at no tax increase to this community from the hard work of our administration and council. We need to be telling people about that.
I don't disagree with you councillor Granger. In fact, if we get all the money that we want, trust me, I will have a release congratulating all of council and administration and all those involved for having allowed this town to be the flagship of future sewer plant renewal.
But when I talk to people out there, they have virtually no idea. You know, maybe they should pay more attention to our council meetings, but people just don't know.
The reason we, we don't want to talk about a sewer too much because up to now, it has been a very, uh, frustrating, sad story, difficult, difficult for workers, difficult for administration, tough on council, and worried, worried to the taxpayer, we don't really want to add too much worry because when it comes to taxes, you know what it is, less is better than more. So right now, I'm just hoping for those grants to come through so that we don't have to jack up taxes.
Just quick, so I don't think we have to talk about this for another hour. I just think, I, I just think it's important. What I'm hearing is that everyone thinks we all could be doing a better job. Uh, we have six months left. I really don't think that we need to be, you know, every day posting, or I think we need a happy medium of posting, did you know? Did you know? And then just posting it, followed by a letter as often as the mayor wants to write them. If she wants to do it weekly, monthly, whatever, but we literally have six months left. So it is important that we get out.
Like you have nothing to do.
Yeah, we're about six months, not that I'm counting, I'm just saying. I, I, I just, that's what I think. I think we just, what's new? What has council been up to? I don't know what that blurb is, but I think it should be putting out there tax notices, whatever we got, let's do it.
Okay. Uh, I will do better, thank you.
No, you're not doing bad.
No, it's not.
Okay. I will do more frequent, that's what you want.
It's not even on you.
No, I.
Yeah, we need a parallel.
I'm not saying it is you, actually, I'm saying it's the other side. I'm saying we, as council, need to be making sure that we are giving the information to administration and the direction to administration to get it out there.
Meeting, did we talk about that?
Yeah, I don't even remember that, Jeff.
Two months ago, maybe?
It's fine.
Anyways.
Yeah.
We're having collective amnesia on it over here.
Now, I'm worried it's me, not you. Yeah, for sure.
And it, yeah, either way.
Councillor.
One thing I found that works for me, and I mean, for everybody else, I, I make him, I make it a point to, to stop in a different businesses and talk to them. The ones on Main Street, Dean down here, they, they know what's going on in the town because they got people coming in and out all the time. I find that, for me, this is the best way to talk about whatever we're dealing with at that particular time. So just be more out in the public.
And you know, we have a chamber of commerce that's starting to be more active. And it wouldn't be such a bad thing to kind of report on those type of things.
We did.
Right. And so already that is a very good, uh, line of communication. Councillor Jensen, do you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, um, well, first of all, apparently, we're all female and we have the right to change our minds. So, but anyway. Anyway, the questions that I get asked the most are, you know, what are we doing about the golf course clubhouse? What are we doing about the EJ Woodlot? What are we doing about Main Street? You know, I get, I get asked those three questions repeatedly, over and over again. And people, and I'm glad because they are in tune and they want to know.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Ten questions we're asking.
Right, yeah, exactly. Okay, well, councillor Burton, send me that list and I'll try to put that in the letter.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
To go, do you guys want a break? No?
Well, we have correspondence, it's just a budget, can we talk about that, maybe nine, for two minutes?
I thought, yep.
Okay, all right. In the Alberta municipality, when we both were, uh, uh, doing that session in Edmonton, I did it through Zoom, and councillor Brown was there. Uh, there was some interesting release, councillor, uh, it was Daniel Smith, Premier Smith, that talked about a few points inside that budget, and as she was announcing, I was sending it to Jeff. And there are a couple of things that I found were interesting to us, anyways. Uh, the, the LGFF this year will be up thirteen percent, is based on a budget, uh, on the state of the economy three years ago. That's the way they kind of base it, which means that, uh, when they have surplus, it, uh, transfers itself into increase in the LGFF. If they have a deficit, we'll see our amount decrease by as much. So this year, it's a good year, we're going to have thirteen percent more next year. It's not going to be, uh, such a good year. But we agreed on that formula to go along with the riches of the, the province. And when it's up, it's up, when it's down, it's down, and we go along with that. Which is more predictable this way. And if you look at the budget, they have forecast for three years, which is welcome news. In the past, we never used to have that. So the, the other one was a grant in place of taxes, a GPOD, which I call it. And I was happy to hear because that represents the exemption of taxes for a lot of properties that are, like the hospital, or the.
Churches.
The churches and all those things. And we, we lost a, a fair chunk of taxes through the way they had reduced it to fifty percent. This year, we found out that they're raising it back to seventy-five percent, and next year will be hundred percent. So I thought those were good announcements. The, the one where, uh, most of the questions were addressed to, to the minister, uh, well, McIver anyways, were the taxes, the education taxes. And his message was, well, let your citizen know that immigration is very high, more schools are needed, you need more money, and therefore, we need to give them more money to build schools. And so the increase, the increase in, uh, education money is fourteen point three percent over last year. Uh, and it's going to be like this pretty well over the next two subsequent years. What does it translate like? This year is an increase of six point three percent on residential property and six point four percent on the non-residential property. And you need to kind of brace yourself for about the same next year and the year after. So the, the FCSS, there was no change, that was, uh, a setting. There was a lot of announcement about more money into housing for the, uh, senior housing. And Jeff, you were telling me something about that housing, the, the money available, the grants available, or did I dream?
Oh, no, well, I'm concerned what I told anybody now. I think this one's truthful, Mayor. Um, yeah, one of the grants we've, we're just working on as we speak is a housing-related grant. This is actually for the wastewater plant.
Right, right.
But there's a grant for infrastructure to support housing growth in your community, including the upgrades of water and wastewater plants. So we're just working on one right now for the wastewater plant under the housing envelope.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
And so there is more, uh, money in the health and the mental health and addiction, which is a welcome thing. The community police officer, hmm, there was, uh, an interesting thing, so happy to see that we can, as I integrated that with the local police. But there is no, no money to offset that at the municipal level.
Mayor, just to be clear on that. That integration of those services or harmonizing, they're calling it, is not with our CMP, that's with city police.
Oh, city police, okay. It's, so it's in a big town, so.
Yeah, they're, they're not, they're not entertaining that right now with the RCMP. Bob and I had this discussion quite recently.
So I was wondering, okay, so that's good. And for the library, councillor Jensen, very sad, there's no more money. They're not increasing anything. Uh, councillor Granger? I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Shut it off. Um, just wanted to point out something that, that we should take note of, and I don't know what we can do about this, but the, uh, the LGFF funding, the new capital framework is considerably less than the old MSI program. And, um, you can see it on the per capita figures on page four. Back in twenty, twenty twelve, Albertans were getting four hundred and fifty dollars per capita. And, um, except for the, this most recent increase in this budget, that had dropped to, um, more than half less. So the Alberta government is giving us less capital money today than they were significantly less than they were, you know, in, in twenty twelve. And, uh, despite inflation, despite the hiccup we had with COVID, with the increase in prices, and the need that's out there, especially for municipal infrastructure, the Alberta government's getting, giving us considerably less money.
Yes, councillor Granger, we are quite aware of that, and Alberta Muni is constantly, uh, keeping that up in the front of their mind. And when I do discussion with the government, it was also discussed at that conference. Unfortunately, at this point, the LGFF has been started on a base that was much lower than previously, about seven hundred and so million less. And so that's what happens when you start with a base that is lower than what we had in two, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. So they are very well aware of it and are constantly advocating for us. So thank you for reminding us that we need to be very aware of that. And you, you're right, less LGFF means less money for infrastructure, you're absolutely correct. Okay, now councillor, uh, Kenley.
Do you guys want a break or no?
No.
All right, I make a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you very much.